Good evening. As the Board and Administration take their place at the dais, it is now time for the regular meeting and public hearing on the annual budget meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education. Roll call of the Board. Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Dr. Lowe is on personal business this evening. Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano is on family business this evening. Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor is at work this evening. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Present.
Inquarum is present. Shall we rise to salute the flag and then remain standing for a rendition of the National Anthem by Sophia LaRosa?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please stay.
Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on April 30, 2019. It's time for recognitions. Superintendent Isola and President Bon Giovanni, sirs.
Tonight, we're fortunate. We have two different recognitions going on in the audience. We have TSA and we also have, I should have known this, the Steam Tank. Steam Tank is a project that's done in conjunction with New Jersey School Boards and the U.S. Army. Students work incredibly hard at it. We've had the pleasure a couple of times of seeing them present both locally and in Atlantic City where they did wonderfully and looking forward to them again in Atlantic City this year at the annual conference. Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir. It's always a great time of the year when we take an opportunity to recognize the amazing talent that graces our hallways each and every day. But I think particularly during this week, I'll take the opportunity to say behind every amazing child that we see reach great heights in very, very different ways, there's some awesome staff members guiding them. And during this week of teacher appreciation, I'll take the opportunity to do this now because I have a feeling when I make the rest of my report, the room will have thinned out a little bit. And this statement is a little bit too important to me personally to miss the opportunity to celebrate our great staff, to our community, and to see so many familiar faces here with parents and students. I think they would all agree that we're particularly fortunate here in Howell to have such an amazing staff, not just teachers but of course our teaching staff, but that goes in every nook and cranny of our school district that make us the leaders that we are in this state. So I wanted to just take that opportunity, I'm sure you're gonna have a remark later, sir, finally I trumped you on that one, but just take the opportunity to recognize the amazing staff that works with our fantastic children each and every day. So we are blessed. If we can just give our staff a round of applause, I'd appreciate it. And speaking of amazing staff, I'd like Ms. Engel, our Director of Innovation and Digital Learning, to come up to the podium to introduce our Steam Tank Challenge, as Mr. Bon Giovanni mentioned, a partnership between the U.S. Army and New Jersey School Boards. And we say it not in an arrogant way but in a very proud way that Howell leads, and I think the Steam Tank Challenge over the last three or four years, we've seen that. And I think you're about to witness that this year was no different. Ms. Engel.
Thank you. Tonight, for those of you that are in the audience that are not familiar with the Steam Tank, the Steam Tank is similar to the Shark Tank, and it pits student teams against one another, and they present innovations to sharks who are comprised of business leaders, engineers. But it's surrounding a concept or an innovation that highlights principles that are within the science, engineering, mathematics, and the arts. And this year, we had seven teams that advanced to the finals. And they have been competing, and they were presenting, and doing their innovations. And just to give you a little bit of information, there were over 600 submissions this year. So to have seven teams advance to the finals, that's a great accomplishment of those individual teams. So give them a round of applause. I'd like to call down, I don't think the advisors for Aldrich, but Mrs. Gorski and Mrs. Carney really worked with these teams, and the one team that advanced, I'd like to call down Mr. Smith and also Mrs. Brown if they'd like to come down and recognize those students and call out their names.
And Mr. Bon Giovanni, do you have a board member assisting with the certificates? Oh, Ms. Okerson, right up. Awesome.
On behalf of Mrs. Brown, the Vice Principal, and our entire staff, we want to congratulate all of the teams that participated, and a special congratulations to all that made it through to the finals. So I'd like to announce those present here this evening, Casey Reinect. Wonderful thought, idea. Can I say the idea? All right, okay. Don't want to give away any copyright or trademark here. Expandable shoes for students. Excellent idea for children, I should say. So over time, instead of buying new shoes each year, they have the ability to expand and grow. Very nice idea, wonderful. So we wish them all the luck. Okay. Want to congratulate Madison Vigliotti as well.
I don't think they're here this evening, but Mr. Greter is here if he wants to come down to recognize his students.
I don't know if there's others. Okay, just those three?
Good evening. If I could just echo what Mr. Smith said, just congratulations to all of our teams. The Memorial Team had a great idea. The Smart Collar 3000 is a device that is basically a GPS tracking for lost pets. These guys did an amazing job of presenting. We are absolutely proud of them and looking forward to their work in Atlantic City. So without further ado, Nicholas DeGiulio. Ashley Hansen. And Aiden Velez.
I don't think they're here this evening, but Mr. Greter is here if he wants to come down to recognize his students.
I don't know if there's any others. Okay, just those three?
Yep. Good evening. If I could just echo what Mr. Smith said, just congratulations to all of our teams. The Memorial Team had a great idea. The Smart Collar 3000 is a device that is basically a GPS tracking for lost pets. These guys did an amazing job of presenting. We are absolutely proud of them and looking forward to their work in Atlantic City. So without further ado, Nicholas DeGiulio. Ashley Hansen.
I say, because they had two teams that advanced to the finals. So I think Mr. Howroyd is here. He'd like to come down and call down the students from Newberry.
Hi, I'm Mr. Howroyd, the Vice Principal over at Newberry, and we're very proud of both our teams that made it through. So we have our entree add-on. So if you've ever struggled to make eye contact with people across the table from you at a restaurant, these girls have the solution to your problem. So Kennedy Brennan.
It's a Stress Less. It's an app to help you deal with your stress in your life. And I believe we have Amelia White.
And I'd like to call down the advisor for Middle School South who has three teams that are advancing to finals, Mr. Langenberger. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Henig, I didn't see you. You're not tall enough over there. Or maybe it's me that I'm short, I can't see over.
I have the distinct pleasure and honor of representing three teams this year that are headed on to the state finals, and I'm looking forward to another successful opportunity once we arrive there. We had six wonderful, very well-thought-out ideas. I'm proud to say that three of those ideas did move forward. And one of the first ideas that moved forward was an idea called Cell Cycle. And the idea was to take the art of recycling and turning it into the next version of Pokemon Go, in which children begin to truly enjoy the process of recycling and gamify the process so that you can earn points in the process. At this time, I'd like to recognize that team by calling each of them down. Kate Lanzito. The next idea was an idea behind Sheer Pressure, which is a process of using pressure points to boost confidence in public speaking. And they have a glove-like device that applies the right pressure at the right points that makes every public speaking engagement a possibility to any student. So at this time, I'd like to recognize those students for Sheer Pressure. Barry Eagle. Now, the crowd is getting a little larger here tonight, and we have one more idea that is going to go on to the state finals tonight, and that is Smarty Tea, the trash can that teaches you what is okay and not okay to recycle. And so to recognize those students tonight, I would like to first acknowledge Kaylee Hassett. Jamie Van Orin.
Who will be joining us for TSA? Thank you, sir. And Ms. Engel, TSA, please.
Thank you. So students in the spring, they typically compete in the TSA, and TSA stands for Technology Student Association. They compete in competitions that highlight principles that are related to STEM, so science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. They compete at a state conference, and for those students that place at the state conference, they are eligible to go on and compete at the national level. And we have many students this year that will be going on to compete at that national level down in Maryland at the end of June. So just to give you a little bit of background information regarding this state competition so you can see how many students competed in this, there were about 735 students and 22 districts, sorry, schools throughout New Jersey that competed this year. Our TSA chapters, so the chapters combined between South and North, brought home a total of 35 trophies. That's really outstanding. And just to kind of put it in relation to last year, last year we brought home 19, so 35 is a great honor. We brought home 15 first place, 11 second, and 9 third. And just to let you know, we swept the event for promotional marketing, so if the Board needs any promotional marketing at all, we definitely have kids within the district that can definitely do that. So we also had kids that placed, that competed in the teams competition while down there. They were also, they placed in the top 10, but we will be recognizing that at another board meeting because we're waiting for all their trophies to come in, but that was part of the competition as well. So thank you to the Board of Education Administration for always continuing to support the TSA and the competitions. I'd like to call down Mrs. Sales first. Mr. Langenberger is pointing to her. We'll call her down. He always goes first, so Mrs. Sales, she's the advisor for North, and come on down and you can recognize your students.
Good evening. I can't tell you how proud I am to be the advisor of these amazing students. It's such a wonderful, dedicated, and devoted group of students that I have. They are amazing, and for that, I need to thank you, the parents, for your continued support of our organization. And for giving us such wonderful leaders. I would like to call up two of such leaders to say a few words about our TSA chapter. Abby and Angelica, are you here?
I am TSA's Vice President, Angelica Data. I'm here to congratulate our TSA chapter. We did an amazing job this year, and we won many awards. On behalf of everyone, I would like to say that we are so proud of all the students who worked so hard to get where we are. In Howell Middle School North, our board placed first place in the leadership conference, and 16 students from our chapter participated in the teams competitions and did well overall. And we placed in nearly every single event at states, hopefully going to nationals. To be in TSA, it means to be responsible, a leader, and to take charge, and that's what TSA does. I would also like to thank the Board of Education and those who helped support us. And also, I would like to thank Ms. Sales. Without Ms. Sales, TSA wouldn't be where we are today. She's an amazing advisor, and our entire chapter is so grateful to have her. Again, TSA did an amazing job this year, and we're all so proud. Now I'd like to introduce the President of TSA, Abigail Polansky. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Polansky, and I am the Howell Middle School North TSA President. I would like to start off by thanking the Board of Education, Ms. Engel, Mr. Isolo, and Mr. Harley. I would also like to thank Ms. Sales. We are so grateful and thankful for having her at TSA. This year, our chapter had a very successful year at states. Forty-eight students attended the state conference on April 3 at TCNJ. Not only did we participate in 31 events, we placed in 23 of them. TSA has been a huge part of my life and middle school career. The atmosphere is always so positive, and it helps me and many other students participate in events catered to our interests. And it helped me have an amazing year, and all the projects that I did were so fun. I am so happy to have been a member of TSA for the past three years. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
And that represents the type of students that we have in TSA. Excellent, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call up our award winners from states. Hopefully, they're here. Paul Buxinski, is he here? Oh, yes. Paul placed in first place in STEM Animation. Angelica Data, first place biotechnology, second place career prep, second place community service video, and third place medical technology. Colin Chester, third place video game design. Will Daly, first place STEM Animation, first place chapter team, second place community Isabel De Leon, second place system control technology, third place promotional marketing. Kazia George, second place system control technology. Kazia George, second place system control technology. Anushka Gupta, second place community service video, third place technical design. Rowena Kanayan, first place biotechnology, second place community service video, third place career prep, third place medical technology, and third place prepared speech. Chumai Palya, first place construction challenge, first place medical technology. Ivy Peterman, first place construction challenge. Julian Sanchez, second place CAD foundation. Savannah Shankar, first place chapter team, first place medical technology, first place promotional marketing, second place system control technology, and third place technical design. Angelika Valour, first place biotechnology. Connor White, first place mass production. Abigail Poliansky, second place community service video, second place digital photography. Zach Unger, first place mass production. Daniel Zelavansky, first place mass production, first place chapter team. Dubem Etchizona, first place tech bowl, second place coding. I don't know if he's here. James Genovese, third place flight, third place video game design. Paul Loftis, first place tech bowl, second pla, third place coding. Not here either. Nick Martino, not here, okay. Second place coding, third place video game design. Sarim Memmon, second place flight. That should be second place leadership, okay. Is he not here? Okay. Hannah Merkel, first place construction challenge. Hasum Paljuani, first place chapter team. Patrick Schaefer, first place tech bowl, third place coding. Ewan Kopola, second place leadership. Great job, everybody, thank you, everybody.
My name is Mr. Langenberger, and I'm the advisor of Howell Township Middle School South TSA. Ms. Sales and I have been doing this for quite some time, and I always try to bring to this award ceremony some type of story of inspiration. And this will be no exception, but I've been told to keep my comments or my stories brief. I have a distinct pleasure of being the advisor to some outstanding leaders here in Howell Township. I am exceptionally proud of each and every one of them. But what I wanted to do is extend an understanding of where do our students go after this award ceremony, when they go on to high school? Where do we find them? Well, I'm very proud to say that this year, at the New Jersey State Executive Board, Howell Township student graduates represent six of the eight leadership positions. Students from North and South, we have six out of eight. And it is quite an accomplishment for me to be able to see how the students continue to grow. This is an organization that represents 10,000 students here in the state of New Jersey, and Howell Township is leading that way. But what makes me even more encouraged and inspired is when I find former students, such as David and Philip, who come back to me and say hello, Mr. Langenberger, and I greet them warmly, and they share with me that they have now become educators themselves. And they stand there not as a member of TSA, but as an advisor of their own TSAs. So these leadership skills that the students are acknowledging and receiving and accepting the responsibility for go well beyond this award ceremony tonight. But I do have the distinct pleasure of recognizing many student leaders here this evening. So when you're calling, when I call your name, please come up and accept this certificate. Ledu Orakel, first place off-the-grid, first place video game design. Harrison Feldman, second place website design. Benjamin Jarman, second place promotional design. Nick Courtenhouse, third place mechanical engineering. Mindy Preston, first place challenging technology issues team one, third place mechanical engineering. Michael Protoline, first place challenging technology issues team one, third place mechanical engineering. John Stillwagon, third place mechanical engineering. Brian Yee, first place flight challenge, second place website design. Caitlin Zito, first place junior solar sprint. Emma Duroff, first place junior solar sprint. Cassidy Brennan, second place technical design, first place video game design. No, she's accepting on her behalf. Now, I don't want to leave anyone out, so I'm going to go through some of these other certificates. Tristan Bennett, second place STEM animation. Matt Cedar, second place technical design, first place video game design. Sam Fertals, first place off-the-grid. Ava Jerning, third place challenging technology issues team two. Ayushi Kirmi, third place challenging technology issues team two. Alex Mann, second place STEM animation. Logan McKenji Creach, second place STEM animation. Dan Mikovic, first place video game design, first place inventions and innovations. Dante Marisi, first place inventions and innovations, first place off-the-grid. Noah Reed, third place mechanical engineering. Ryan Shetton, first place inventions and innovations, first place off-the-grid. Tyler Wolf, second place website design. Kira Zimmer, first place junior solar sprint. Did I miss anyone? Okay, all right.
Sir, that concludes our recognitions of students this evening. I'd like to thank you and congratulate all our wonderful students.
Before you leave, I would really be remiss with the number of staff that are here if I didn't talk about Teacher Appreciation Week. And staff is not just the teachers in the class, it's the principals, it's the assistant principals, it's the bus drivers, it's the people who work in the cafeteria. Staff is everybody who cares, and these kind of awards that just happen don't happen casually. As you heard, based on the numbers here compared to other districts, they only happen because of the support, the leadership, the time that this staff spends with your, with your children to help them accomplish these goals. So, on behalf of the whole board, I'd really like to thank all this staff. Your efforts are truly recognized. And I'm going to take a personal point of privilege here and do three other recognitions very quickly, if you don't mind. The other night at Monmouth County School Boards, Mr. Gurman was given an award for first term, for a new board member award, for being a new board member. Mrs. Malley received the award for a certificated award, board member. This happens because of the time that they put in to go to meetings and to increase their knowledge to help support this administration, so I'd like to acknowledge both of those. And the, go ahead. And the last person is, we had a really nice surprise at the Monmouth County meeting. For those of you who know him well, Mr. Miller was very involved, who is the President of the PTA at Southern School well before he came on this board. I've had the privilege over many, many years of working with very many board members. I'd be hard-pressed to think of anybody who has been more dedicated than Mr. Miller, and it was really a great surprise for all of us, and certainly for him, when the President of the PTA Association statewide was there and awarded him a lifetime achievement award for his efforts on behalf of the county. And again, thank you all for being here tonight.
Two-minute recess, perhaps, sir?
Take my recess.
Recession. Okay, has the board and administration make their way back to the dais? The board is back in session. It is now time for the presentation on the annual budget in the public hearing. On the budget, sir.
Mr. Sasek, thanks. We look forward to the presentation. In order of business, we will have the presentation afterwards. We'll open it up, we have a focus topic in this evening's agenda, but that focus topic will be the budget itself, so we'll go right into board discussion for, discussion about the budget. We'll then open it up to the public if there are any other public comments, and then we'll move forward from there.
Ready?
You're on.
Thank you. As we get started this evening, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the entire board, but also thank you to the Finance Committee chaired by Mr. Miller, also, as board members, Ms. Malley and Ms. Okerson, and our citizen members, Mr. Smith, Mr. Clark, and Ms. Fleishman. Thank you to them, thank you to the board for their support. The presentation tonight is one that has some little complications in it, but we will get to that. So as always, the board's budget is the statement of its educational goals through a financial perspective. The old cliche, put your money where your mouth is. This presentation tonight will address the priorities that we considered as we developed it, the accomplishments towards those priorities in this and prior years, the successes and the challenges. Also, we could not have this discussion without evaluating the current legislative environment and the continuing impact that that is going to have going forward. The priorities, support and continue to enhance student and staff learning. We want to make sure that we focus on the entire organization learning as a team. Reduce and control operational and discretionary expenses. That's the one place where we do have some control of things that won't impact the education and the product in the classroom. So we strive very hard. Ms. Malley leads the Operation Committee. We work very hard to reduce those costs that are unseen in the classroom. Also, the other side of the equation, enhance our revenue production. We try to bring in money so that it's not from the other sources any chance we get, and I believe we do very well as compared to most districts. And then, the end result of that is to minimize the tax impact and to provide continued stability, which I'm also proud to say, under Mr. Miller, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Van Noy, going back probably 11 years now, we've had a real long-term, long view process of doing the budgeting as compared to the year-to-year that had been the practice in the past, based on the legislation. And again, we have to, as we're trying to minimize the tax impact, we have to remember that the current legislative environment is not one that is foreseeable with all certainty. This budget does accomplish a lot of things. The one thing that we're very proud of is we're recognized as one of the only districts with all of its schools. All 12 of our schools received the Future Ready Certification, and we will be going for the Gold Certification or Silverwood Distinction once they figure out which it is. Has that been finalized? Silverwood Distinction has been decided on. We will go there. The curricular demands, as Mr. Preston leads the Curriculum Department, we continue to meet those demands. We maintain our technological advantage, excuse me, I put that word in there, I should have practiced it more. Maintain and upgrade our facilities. As you all know, we are, well, maybe you don't know, but we're in the middle of our ESIP program, which I'll get to in a minute, providing a lot of maintenance for the facilities and some nice upgrades. Our tax stability is one that we're very proud of. The board has been proud of that, and I'll get to some slides as we go through this. As our fleet, our bus fleet ages out, it is a mandate that we can only use the buses for 15 years, so this budget continues to keep the fleet refreshed. And it gives us the opportunity to expand our personalized learning. But one thing that we have to make sure that we don't lose sight of is that we are also a major part of the community. We provide more services to more of the citizens of this town than any other organization or institution in the town. On a daily basis, we serve more meals than all the restaurants in Howe. We transport 6,000 students to and from school every day. We care for more minors than any other institution. And we are by far the largest employer in Howe Township. We employ more residents and more personnel in total. To accomplish that, obviously, there has to be administrative costs. But the state sets a per pupil maximum, and I'm glad to say, once again this year, we are significantly under that maximum. Approximately $1,200,000, almost $1,300,000 below that maximum set by the state. The multi-year strategy, as I mentioned, we've been able to take a long-term view of our budget, and it has paid dividends, giving us a little bit of breathing room in this uncertain legislative environment. We use a multi-year program of forecasting, we leverage our assets and potentials, and we try to be prudent in every decision that we make. For example, the Maintenance Reserve allows for continued upgrades along with the ESIP without a tax impact to the residents. However, the legislative environment continues to be trying, and the future looks like there will be more trying years ahead. Our methods to maintain that stability, we continue to monitor our debt and focus on the impact of that debt to the budget. We are going to commission and monitor our ESIP. And you see down the bottom, the ESIP stands for Energy Saving Improvement Plan. I mentioned it once before. We're very proud to be saying that this budget with the ESIP savings will be providing the funds without any impact on the taxpayers to have air conditioning in every classroom in this district by the end of this coming school year. But that's not enough. We will continue to enhance through Sustainable NJ and the other efforts of the Operations Committee to enhance the resource conservation beyond the ESIP. Every dollar we save is a dollar that goes back to the classroom. We're working on a daily basis with our colleagues around us to expand the shared services. We're routing our transportation more efficiently through the purchase that was made along with the ESIP to be able to do better routing. We will have fewer routes transporting a higher percentage of our students on our buses, meaning fewer routes that we have to contract out. We maximize our revenue sources, as I said, continue streamlining operational functions. We're working very hard. One of our biggest expenses beyond salaries is our health benefits. We're very aggressively auditing those health benefit claims to make sure that the high-quality care that our staff is getting is paid for at the right rate. And we are doing very well with that, and it's returning benefits. And then, we enhance our purchasing strategies. Our central purchasing department has just done wonderful things, finding economies in almost every purchase order that we issue. We do have challenges in the budget, and we address them. The announced funding cuts, as I will show you, we are looking at some very serious cuts over the next five years, the remainder of the S2 plan. Unfunded government mandates, they continue, even though they're not funding the schools at the formula or even funding the unfunded mandates, but they keep putting more things for us to do. And we have to continue to identify our main purpose. We have deferred capital needs, even though the ESIP is allowing us to do quite a bit of work to the building and to expand the air conditioning. We still have some deferred capital needs that we have to continue to plan for as we go forward in the next several years. Security is always, always a problem, I'm sorry, not a problem, it's always a high priority, and we work very hard to make sure that the students and staff are safe. One remaining challenge that we are not really sure about is, as I've said, and I keep beating the drum, lack of a clear legislative direction on funding. Tonight is the last night, well, actually tomorrow would be the last night where we can strike a budget, yet the state still has not decided what they're going to do. I believe Mr. Gurman shared with me today that he read that they might make a decision next week, yet we statutorily have to make a decision tonight. And that's one of the things we wrestle with, and that's one of the things we'll talk about when we get to the focus topic. And then, as they did last year, after we struck our budget and after we filed on the statutory deadlines, they announced that we were getting less money than they had told us from state aid. So, we still don't know whether there will be additional cuts coming down from the state budget. So, right now, the budget that you have in front of you, and we will discuss tonight and have the opportunity to either endorse or change. The total general fund levy is $75 million, $4 million for the debt levy, for a total of $79,993,000 to be raised from the taxpayers of Howe. Last year's levy was $73,908, with $4,609 for the debt levy, or a total of $78,518,000. It's a projected levy increase currently with the budget that was advertised of $1,475,000. That represents another milestone, as we have done over the years and kept it well below the 2% mark. This budget, the way it's laid on the table right now, represents a 1.88% increase in the levy. Again, that's based on the current state aid notice and the current tentative budget on the table. So, where do we get the money from? I reversed this a little bit this year. The first one is federal aid. The federal aid is a very small portion of our aid, but it's important because it's focused towards some of the neediest students in the district. It's made up of the Title I, II, III, and IV money, as well as IDEA and a small amount of other grants. Title I is for those students at risk in poverty situations, and IDEA is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So, that's the, most of the identified special needs students. So, that money helps to deliver those services. Miscellaneous revenue generated from our building rents, from our other activities, from our shared services represents a small amount, $2,400,000. Interest on investments, building usage fees, and shared service fees and other government deals. Then, the second largest is the state aid, and again, that is a shrinking number. The state aid notice this year, where it was last year was $34 million, this year was $30 million. You can see that after the massive cut between 2009-10 and 2010-11, where we went down to $30 million, we did recover over the years with a little bit of variation. But currently, you can see that we're down almost to the level that we were in 2009-10. The other part that we struggle with is that if they don't shut the government down, they can take up till June 30th to finalize, although Mr. Gurman shared that we might have some information, possibly next week. And then, the largest amount of money that we raise is from the local tax levy. The general fund levy in 2018-19 was $73,908. The calculation to arrive at the 2% cap without waivers and then the three-years-prior bank cap left us with an allowable levy of $76,332. The proposed levy on the tentative budget that was submitted is $75,525, still below the total allowable levy. So, what that means, doing the math again and adding in the debt service, you see that we still have $945,863 of what's called banked cap, which is really an authorization to raise money, it's not money in a bank or a bucket somewhere, of $945,000. And what that represents is some of the cumulative, although it only lasts three years. You can see that over the last 10 years, under the guidance and trust that the Board and Administration developed, you can see that our average increases with debt service are an average of 1.19%, and I would hold that up against any other district in the area. And similar, without the debt service included, it's still a very, very respectable 1.61% average levy increase over the last 10 years. What that also means is that there was taxing authority that this Board did not use. And I think it's very important to point out that when some districts were taking the max every year, we were being prudent, we were out of a trust that was developed between the Board and Administration and the past boards. We were not taking all of the levy allowability that we had. And it's very, very proud to say that that would accumulate to $15 million of unused taxing authority. So, if we're at 78 right now, we would be at 93 if we had used, and I'm just round numbers, obviously, if we had used all of that taxing authority. $15,432,753 that we did not use. So, once we develop the tax levy, the tax rate is developed from two different budgets. And I've shown this a few years, and those of you who have seen it, you probably know it by heart. But the tax year, the tax bill and the tax rate that the township mails out is based on a calendar year. Our budgets are based on a fiscal year. So, the actual tax rate that will be sent out is based on half of the budget that we're living in right now and half of the budget that we're talking about this evening. So, you see the 1819 school budget and the 1920 school budget, the tax year is this in-between. So, to calculate the tax rate, you take the total to be raised from January to June, add it to the total to be raised from July to December, which is half a year in each case, and those two together create the portion to be raised in 2019 for the local school tax. What that means in numbers, you can see that we have the half and the half, they go together. The tax rate in the 2018 was 1.132 cents per hundred. The tax rate presented by this rate would be 1.101, a decrease of 3.1 cents. But, the good news is that town assets and people's houses are becoming more valuable. So, the value or the multiplier, excuse me, can't have the house come down yet. The multiplier that we use has gone up about $10,000 on that average house. Not a different house, that's the increased value of the average house, that same hypothetical house. So, if you look at this, the tax year 2018 with a combined value, Howe Township has a combined value of $6 billion, $6,918 million. The average house in Howe would pay about $3,876 in local school taxes. That same house, under this proposal, would be $3,883. And if I go back here, you see that that represents a $7 per year increase on the average house, essentially flat. And if your house is worth twice that, it would be 14, and half that, it would be 3.5. And this chart shows the four largest taxing entities for most people. I left out the library and the fire districts because they're all different for each little area of Howe. But you see that over this period since 2000 to 2018, we have been working constantly to decrease the impact on taxpayers for our services. And you see the other three services in town varying. Currently, we continue to scrutinize expenditures, we continue our streamlining and cost savings. We're still conserving electric and utilities above and beyond the ESIP. Our purchasing procedures continue to get better. Our utilization of technology, like the Zonar and the routing software to make us more efficient in the transportation, and then revenue production. And whatever revenue we can generate in this, or whatever money we cannot spend in the current budget, becomes our surplus for subsequent budgets. Great students, great staff, great community. I added this one for Mr. Isola. #HowLeads. But, as Mr. Bon Giovanni said, the issue this evening, you know what? I apologize, I should have moved this before. Everybody's looking around the flag at me. So, what's that? Oh, yeah, I planned it that way. So, discussion-focused topic, as Mr. Bon Giovanni said. S2 was the name, even though it's become a chapter law now, it has maintained its name of S2, so I continue to call it that. That was Senate Bill 2 that defined the cuts that we will be experiencing. Those cuts are going to be $2,400,000 next year, based on a static projection, which isn't necessarily the case. And by the last year, that we're projected to be up to $10,600,000. So, in the Governor's Budget for 2018-19, just before S2 was fully implemented, the Governor told us in March that we were going to get $382,000 more dollars in aid. But then, by the time the final budget came out, and you remember my crystal ball slide, we don't know what that crystal ball is going to yield this time. Last time, we ended up with a cut of $913,000. So, this year in the Governor's Budget, the original S2 estimate was $1,381. The actual state cut, when we got it after he spoke, was $1,600,000. So, we're already up from that. So, I just put question marks here. We don't know what the final budget will be in July. We don't know if they will have another cut or not, and there's no news. I'm not saying there is, but I'm not saying there isn't. We didn't expect it last year either. So, we're awaiting the news, but our budget hearing tonight is our last chance to strike the budget for next July 1st and the next school year in September. One thing that I showed the Finance Committee was that if we extrapolate the increase that we experienced this year from 1.3 to 1.6, if that amount of growth in the cuts continue, by the time we get to the last year in '24-'25, our $10,600 cut will be up to $12,600,000 of reduction in state aid. So, if you remember that graph with the arrows, that $30 million, which is down from almost $40 million, will be down to $18 million. So, that raises the question of what to do, and the Finance Committee took it up, and then we took it up at the last Board meeting, and you asked for it to be on as a focus topic and discussion this evening. That brings up the discussion of the banked cap. We have the $965,000 in banked cap, which, if you were to ask me tonight, I would tell you that it is imperative that that would be taken next year. It can also be taken this year, it is cumulative. So, I was asked to put the discussion on, and this graph shows, keep hitting that instead of the laser, I apologize. So, this is what the levy was last year. The green bar shows what the levy is right now in the projection that I just went through. The slight increase in the orange bar, if that's orange or brown, shows that it would go from $75,500 to $76,400. And then, it just shows the projection over the years, and you see that it evens out because I would be projecting using it, if it's not used here, it would be used here. Does that slide make sense? So, what I did was I put that calc of tax rate sheet back up here, but I put a variable cell in it. So, if anybody wanted to see what any of the increases would do, I know that we did it at Finance and at the Board last month. And if you were to use all of the banked cap and reduce our reliance on Maintenance Reserve, it would be $30 per the average house, and halfway, I think it was 19 or 20. So, but we could put any of those numbers in there, or I can answer any questions that you may have. So, Mr. Bon Giovanni, I assume you want to open the focus topic?
I'll turn to the Board first. Mr. Gurman?
A number of thoughts. You're good. I'm good. Thoughts I'd like to mention. First thing that strikes me is that we have great challenges confronting us in the years ahead. That funding formula that the Legislature and the Governor adopted... That funding formula that the legislature and the governor adopted for a six or seven year period, which is already in effect, has brought tremendous changes in our prospects for the upcoming years. I saw a report in the newspaper that indicated that of all the districts that have been cut in the state, that in terms of absolute dollar amounts, we were number five, and we're a K8 district going forward for the next few years. So there's a real challenge. And again, we, I read the papers every day and read it here in the local papers for what's going on in various districts in Monmouth and Ocean County, and I realize that we have a real challenge. We have an outstanding school system, which translates, as I see it, to giving our children, our students, the possibility of having an exceptional education and giving them the possibility of having wonderful prospects. We have an outstanding staff, we have outstanding administrators. This is the work of boards that have gone on for years, outstanding superintendents, outstanding staff and commitment by teachers, and want to see that that continues. I know I'm reflecting the thoughts that we all have. So, and the question becomes, how much room do we have really to maneuver? This year, we faced, we got a $1.6 million cut from where we were a year before. As Mr. Sanisak pointed out, if you look at where we were 10 years ago in the district, if we looked at the amount of money that taxpayers paid to the state that came back to our district to help support the schools, we now are at the same number roughly of $30 million as we were 10 years ago. And yet, even with modest inflation in this country of about 2% a year, you compound that over 10 years, and you realize, again, the costs go up for everything, and you still have to maintain that system. So, the concern I have is, this is 1.6 million, and now we're going forward to what's going to happen in the next fiscal year. The state constitution requires that the legislature and the governor adopt a budget by midnight at the end of June 30th. They generally are pretty good at doing that, our state is good at that. And we've had a couple of shutdowns, but they've been of short duration. Hopefully, a budget will be passed so that the schools can go forward in operations, we can be funded. But we know already that going forward next year, we can expect at least a $2.4 million additional cut for next year. It's in that context that I believe that we really should be looking at the bank cap. This is a district with the leadership of the board and our administration, for years has put together a wonderful funding program with long-range planning, with reasonable actions to try to keep us very sensibly fiscally conservative, and at the same time provide for the needs of our schools. But things have changed now. So, the bottom line is, I really believe that it's necessary to look to that bank cap. Mr. Sanisak said just a few minutes ago that he believes that for next year, the authorization to raise that money will become necessary. So the question becomes, what do we do for this budget year coming forward? And I definitely believe without a doubt that we need, or should, not need, we should, in my view, take some of that bank cap money. And there's one particular reason. Mr. Sanisak talked about the budget numbers. And this is something that we could plan all year long, the governor can plan, the legislature can plan. The governor gives his or her budget message in February of each year. At that time, the governor presents a number of what projected revenues will come in, as well as what the expected expenditures will be. But what really matters is when the numbers come in at the end of that, before the end of the fiscal year, Mr. Sanisak was making reference to that. Again, if you read the newspaper reports, and it's consistent with previous years, the state treasurer, the office of legislative services, which monitors this as well, is not ready to come up with a really strong number of where we'll, what kind of revenues we're going to have. Particularly because of the change in the federal income tax law and how it may affect the state law, we really won't know for a little while what the expected revenues will be. The governor had projected a 7.3% increase in revenues. We're well below that in the February numbers. So at that point, it seems to me that we need to protect ourselves. One year ago at this time, we were told by the state that we would get X amount of money. By June, we were told we would get hundreds of thousands of dollars less. Once again, we may face that prospect. We could read about things that seem nothing at all connected with budget, the question whether there should be a millionaire's tax, question whether there should be marijuana sales in the state. How that relates to the budget and how the governor and the legislature look at that is more in terms of what effect that might have on a projected fiscal year budget. Those things are still up in the air, but it really means that all those balls are still up in the air as to what the legislature and governor may do in terms of how much they may allocate to our district, and in terms of expenditures, and how much we'll have in revenue. So the bottom line is, I really believe we need to take some of that bank cap, just in case the state numbers are low and they suddenly do what they did last year and cut our funding. Thank you.
Okay, I was, the finance committee, when this was presented, and the discussion was to take 100% of the bank cap. And that was the recommendation of the finance committee, although I voted against that. I don't believe that we should move forward taking 100% of the bank cap, but I am also not advocating that we take zero of it. If we don't take it by next year, we lose it, correct? We lose that option. So, my suggestion, I believe Mr. Miller is the one who suggested it at the finance committee meeting, was to take 50% of it this year, and then 50% of it next year, which would then be less of a burden on the taxpayers this year because the tentative was released as $7 increase. To jump from 7 to 30, I think is being unfair to the taxpayers. We've developed quite a trusting relationship over the years, and I think the community is counting on us to continue that. But I do agree with you, Mr. Germin, that we do need to look at the bank cap. We can't just not take any of it. So I, my proposal was to move forward this year with 50% of the bank cap.
Mrs. Okerson?
Again, being on finance as well, I would agree with the half for the bank cap. I don't think we can take none of it because of, you can't be on it, you don't know what this date is going to come down with. But I think putting, taking half would put us in a good position if we do get hit with a higher cut, but then if not, it's still there, and we can use it for next year if we didn't need it for this year.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yeah, I think my comments are similar to what has been said. We don't know what's going to come down from Trenton, and to protect our students and protect the education that we're doing, we need to take some of the money, but I don't think we need it all. I think 50% is a good compromise.
Like my fellow board member said, this is a very hard discussion. We did put out a tentative budget for not taking any of it, and raising our tax levy by $7 for the average home. But we did see last year where at the last second, the state took a huge amount of money from us. And when we put out our budget this year, being fiscally responsible, we put out a budget that would get us through the year, and with the trust that would be something that we would be able to survive on. So, if we were to get a cut like that, we would struggle as a district, and it would impact the education, I believe, of the students and the staff of our district, and we can't have that. We have to maintain the education levels in our district. And we did have a big discussion at the finance committee about this. And like Ms. Malley said, and Mrs. Okerson, it was a recommendation for the finance committee for us to take the full thing. It wasn't an anonymous, unanimous decision, but it was their recommendation to take the full, which I also didn't agree with at that time because I thought that would be taking too much from the township taxpayers. So, my recommendation is to go with the half because it gives us a little cushion just in case the state at the last minute does desire to take this money from us. We know next year that we are getting cut $2.4 million. So if we were to take, and we know we got cut $1.6 million, which was a little over $300,000 something thousand dollars more than we were supposed to get. And if we, you know, we get cut more, we still would have $400 and something, $472,000 and change to sustain those cuts. So I would agree with my fellow board members to recommend taking the half. Unfortunately, that would bring us up to a $19 increase on the average home, but we need to protect the education for our students and the staff members in our district.
Thank you. I was, while I'm not part of that committee, I was at the finance committee when it was discussed and listened to all the conversations, and for anybody who might remember, our last board member, we certainly had, and we were thankful that night we had everybody here, we had a lengthy discussion as the focus topic about this same conversation. And the intent was to give some time to consider what we were looking at then, what we're looking at tonight. I'm going to take one of the smallest slivers that was up there first, and I'm going to address that. And it's what we get from the federal government. And I recognize that was a very small amount, but that small amount certainly impacts what we can do in the district when you're talking about a lot of the IDEA money. That's money that without that, we'd have some troubles going on. And it's a very small sliver, but it's important money for what we do for the students. Looking at the things that are going on in the newspapers, the TV reading, everything, I'm just, I can't say that I have complete faith that the US government is going to find more money for education than we are currently getting. As a matter of fact, I'll be the pessimist on this particular one, I'm always afraid that we're going to get less. It's just going to happen. We, we attended, a number of us attended an advocacy conference down in Washington. I didn't hear anything at that conference that encouraged me that all of a sudden the government's going to find a lot more money to put into education. Let's talk about the state aid. We heard, and everybody addressed it, we heard what happened back in the 9, 10, 10, 11 year, and where that bar graph was at. And now, over those years, we're back at that number. I can remember back to when that happened, and what a devastating blow it was to the district to all of a sudden lose that money. And after all the hard work that these, this board, this board and pass boards have done over the last couple of years, to try to put money away and to be responsible and to be as fiscally sound as possible, we're faced with the fact that we do not know what's going to happen in June when the, when the state makes its final numbers. Again, I'm going to have to be the pessimist on this particular one. I'm fearful that we could strike a number tonight, send it in. The concept of the fact that the state requires us to put in a budget before we know what we're getting is absurd, but it's what we have, it's what we have to live with. One thing, I get presented a lot of different conferences for different reasons, and one of the things I always do is I remind the board members at those conferences, at some point during the meeting, say to yourself, what do we do for the kids today? I recognize the tax impact this will have on the citizens, on us, on me. I recognize what it would be. I said at the last meeting that, to be honest with you, I would have been in favor for the 400%, and mostly because I have to look across the administration and say, what can we do to make sure that we're putting you in a position where you can continue the services to support the education you're doing for the children in this town today? I'm not foolish, I'm not saying that that education and that support is going to end if we don't, if we don't take some of that money. But I'm fearful what unfunded mandates might come down. I'm fearful of what's going to happen in the future, what programs we might need to develop and not have the money there. Again, I would have been in favor of the 400%, but certainly listening to my fellow board members, both at the last meeting and tonight, I can live with the 50, but I think that we would be making a mistake if I, if I go back to my question, what are we doing for the kids today? I think we're making a mistake if we don't take at least the 50%. Anybody else?
Mr. Sanisak, I'd like to open it for public comment.
Absolutely, and hearing what I believe is unanimous at 50%, would you like to take a, we will open the floor on an amended budget with one half of the, I put it in while you were speaking, $472,932 of additional bank cap utilized in the budget.
Somebody would have to make that.
That's what I'm looking for. George, would you take a roll call, please? We'll call this A1.
I would prefer that we hear from the public before we vote.
Okay. So it'll be open on the concept of it then? Okay. Mr. Bon Jovani, may it... The use of bank caps, so the public can speak on it, but they can speak on the concept.
Use of the cap, not the actual budget itself. Please open the floor for public comment.
Are there comments or questions regarding, this is the public hearing on the budget, comments or questions at this time? State your name and address for the record.
Tim O'Brien, 55 Casino Drive, Farmingdale, New Jersey, otherwise known as Howe. And thank you for the budget presentation, thank you. This is the first budget hearing in over a decade that I haven't been sitting on that side of the table, so it's, it's great though to see the dialogue between all of you. And having the experience that I have had, I know the work that went into preparing for this moment right now. I know the history, and I can tell you that having been there when they cut the state aid that first time around, it's not a bar chart to me. It's a living painful memory. That memory, which many of you fortunately may not have, but some of you do, was of a sudden, sharp, destructive cut to our state aid. And at the time, we weren't given the authority we are now to set budgets on a long-term basis. We had to put them out to a vote for the public. And in the prior 15 budget votes, 13 had failed. It didn't matter if we cut taxes, sometimes they would fail, just because people just would vote no. And then, the law changed, and we had the opportunity as a board to take the responsibility and the leadership role of setting budgets, and instead of having to go to a public vote, it was now up to the board. So each of us took on the responsibility of that decision for our community. And as you can see from the numbers, when you look at it, we've done a great job in terms of not only earning but building that trust. That trust that exists between the community, between our staff, our students, the parents out there who rely on us in this district to, on you now, in this district, to give their children the opportunities that lead to the successes we saw earlier with the recognitions. As we talked about eight, was that eight of the, help me out here, how many of our students? Exactly. Howe really does lead. The students out there in the Freehold Regional, several of whom are mine, are prospering and thriving because of the educational base. My oldest is graduating from Seton Hall with her nursing degree, has already gotten a job offer. I told her, wait, keep interviewing, look around, but it's because of the foundation that she got here. So, we went through some very, very difficult times back in the 2010-11 period, and we had to make some tough choices. But over the years, this board and this administration, previous administrations and this current superintendent and his team, and our staff have worked collaboratively with us to not only avoid $15 million in untaxed levy, but also about $25 million in unavoided healthcare costs through collaboration. So the actual total of cost savings to the taxpayers in this community over the last decade approaches almost $15 million. decade approaches almost $50 million. When you think about it, the numbers are phenomenal, and the job that we've done has been very, very strong, beyond reproach. But one of the things that we did back when we took the burden of voting on a budget was we decided that, at the end of the day, as Harry Truman used to say, the buck stops here, we have to lead. And tonight I saw leadership. What I see is a continued leadership, a continued culture of making sure we strike a balance, and trust in our administration to tell us what they need, and then give them the resources to get the job done. So I feel perfectly comfortable when I look at this budget and see, okay, the average house up 19, mine's a little different, but my number is higher, I'm okay with that. You have the support of this community that gets it and understands the value. The parents that you saw here tonight, earlier, celebrating their children, the parents who had children in the school system and currently live here, we're very, very comfortable and have a complete trust in the fiduciary responsibility and prudence and care that you take in preparing every budget, the way that you go about it. Because you're right, tough times lie ahead. We need to prepare for that. And we don't do things on a year-to-year reactive basis here. We're proactive, long-term planners who have rebuilt this district from the devastating cuts of 2009, 2010, to one where our students lead across the state. They thrive, they grow, they go on to become the future leaders of our country, and we should be extremely proud of that. So I want all of you to understand that while you may have some folks who say, what? A tax increase? This tax increase is mild compared to the value that we get for supporting our educational system, the things that we've built, everything that we've done over the years. The trust we've built with our community, with our staff, and with our students needs to be protected and preserved. So I commend you for this. It was a thoughtful discussion. I know the work that went into it, and I can speak only for myself, but I do think I speak for a great number of people out there, that the community does trust you. And you've earned that trust over the years, and they'll continue to trust you because transparency and commitment to what's in the best interest of our children is at the foundation of every decision you make. So you have our support, you have my support, and thank you, and I commend you. Great job on this budget. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, I think I have to say something at this point, and it's not typical that we do this response to public comment, but I think everybody at this side of the table tonight recognizes the hard work that went over the past 10, 12 years to put us in this position that we are today, where we've been in a better position than many districts throughout the state. You've been a major part of that work that happened over the years, so at least from this seat, thank you.
No questions or comments for the public hearing? Mr. President, seeing none, may the public hearing be closed?
Please.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you.
I think it's time for, who wants to make a motion to move it up?
Mr. Sansec, at this time, could we move up 6,000-1?
Yes. Would you like to amend 6,001 or have an A1 amending the budget? Either, we just have to move the bank cap, we have to have the bank cap recognized. Would you like to just include it in the 6,001?
Motion that was on the floor. We have to vote on the motion that was on the floor before we went to...
The A1.
Right.
Right, so move A1. Move A1, which is, as I indicated, authorize the inclusion of one half of the bank cap. Can somebody read the number? 475,000?
472,8...
Oh, I can't say.
932.
932.
Of bank cap in the budget and...
And then the budget.
Then the budget. So would you like to take A1 and 6,001?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a mover and a seconder, please?
Moved.
We did.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Okerson, second by Mrs. Malley. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Javoni?
Yes.
Thank you. The amendment and the budget are approved, six votes in favor, none opposed. It is now time for the board to go into executive session, sir.
As long as it's on the table, why don't we do the budget vote now and then go into exec? No, that was to, that was to accept the amendment.
I...
It was both.
I asked if we could take them both together.
My mistake.
I apologize.
Okay, my mistake.
Did anybody want to have the vote separate?
No.
Okay. So the two motions, A1 and 6,001, are approved, six votes in favor, none opposed.
Go to exec.
Go to exec. Thank you. It is now time for the, next our place to the dais, the board meeting is back in session. May we take the minutes?
Please.
Mover and seconder, please?
Move it.
Move by Ms. Malley, second by Ms. Okerson. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
I'm standing.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Javoni?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, five votes in favor, with the abstention noted for the record. The correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for Board President Comments. President of Board, Mr. Bon Javoni, your comments, sir.
I think we've probably done most of the comments tonight, but I will have one thing that I'd like to add, is that I was at the opening the other day of the new STEAM room at Aldridge. What a wonderful, first off, thank you to the bank, to Ocean First for their contribution, but as importantly, thank you so much to the staff there who put together just such a bright, wonderful room. It's impossible to walk in there and not just, it's bright, it's engaging, it's something you want to start playing with yourself in there and just looking around. So really wonderful. And with that, I'll stop, that's enough of my comments tonight.
Wow.
Thank you. It is now time for the Superintendent, Board Secretary's report. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Isola, your comments, sir.
Yes, thank you, sir. In addition to some of the things we already spoke about, like the importance of Teacher Appreciation Week and Staff Appreciation, which I think is, you know, job one this evening, we're glad we took that opportunity with a full house to take that, take that opportunity to recognize our outstanding folks. Like Mark, I was also at the IDEA Lab at Aldridge for the opening, and Mr. Smith and the staff there, Ms. Carney and Ms. Gorski did an incredible job presenting that lab to our community. It was really a wonderful ceremony. Also, early in the month, we did the official opening of the outside classroom in the Peace Garden over at Memorial School. Quite proud of those two accomplishments through outside sources of funding, and I think that's really an important fact, that our staff continues to look for ways to remain innovating and cutting edge, and we're doing a great job. Memorial informed me today that they confirmed with News 12, will be out on May 15th to do a small segment, and so keep your eyes open. Normally, they turn those stories around rather quickly, so I'm sure by the evening of May 12, May 15th, you'll start to see that airing on the news on Channel 12, NJ12 here in New Jersey. So really excited about that. As you know, New Taipei City, our sister district that we worked so closely with over the last few years, was gracious enough to fly two of our folks out, and Mr. Sansec along with Mr. Preston represented Howell Township Public Schools over spring break. While, you know, most people were on vacation, they were actually representing our district across the world, literally, and they did an outstanding job. The feedback that we are receiving through social media and communications that continue with our partners in Taiwan have really been impressive, and I think they have taken some real great lessons back here, and we're already started talking about some of the things they saw and how that could influence our work. And I think one of the really cool things that they both shared with me, specifically Mr. Preston in his previous work with some of our partners there, was the influence we've had on them and their visits here. You know, you can see it taking, taking form right in front of your eyes when you're there. And I was really thankful to both Mr. Sansec and Mr. Preston for keeping me informed throughout the week and...
Even though it was 12 hours late.
Yeah, they kept me up, you know? They were, they were waking up while I was sleeping, but I got them back later in the afternoon. Around noon time, I'd always find an important message to send to them, which was, they were exactly 12 hour difference. So when it was noon here, it was midnight there. So we had a little cat and mouse game going with our communication until Pamela put an end to that. So, so it all was good. I think one of the really exciting opportunities that came out of that visit was they've asked, you know, they have a sister agreement with Middle School South, and it's really been a good partnership. They had students come previously, and it was really great. They've asked to extend that partnership to the elementary level, and we're speaking specifically around ESL and for us and the bilingual work there. So we're working with Mrs. Palazzolo and Dr. Pinnell on doing Adina and, I'm sorry, Adelphi and Adina, entering into a sister agreement with an elementary school there, much like South did. So we're excited about that. We'll be proceeding, and we'll be keeping you updated on that work. So in addition, we have some upcoming events, just two to mention today. Of course, this Saturday is the Race to Educate. I'm sure Mr. Gorman will also speak of the importance of that date. Really, I hope that we can get the community out there to support the foundation. As we know and as we saw at the Evening of the Stars earlier, I'm sorry, last month, they're an organization that is totally volunteer and always about giving to our students and our staff. So I hope that we have a great turnout on Saturday, the 11th, over at Middle School South. The information is, you know, being pushed on social media and on our website, so, you know, everyone should know about it, but hopefully we'll, we'll get the campus down there rocking and rolling, and we'll do some good fundraising for a good cause. On the 21st of May, we will go gray to be like Jake. Jake's the young Land of Pine student that we lost to brain cancer, and the family has formed the foundation to continue to raise awareness around the importance of supporting families who are struggling with youngsters who have cancer. So we're going to be going gray throughout, certainly in central office. Each school can do it voluntarily, on a voluntary basis. We're seeing some good push about that and some good attention being raised for a worthy cause. So wanted to make the board and the community aware of that. And then finally, Mr. Preston will hand out the monthly report on suspensions, and during this reporting period, we had nine out-of-school suspensions, and that is similar, about two less than the previous year's similar period. Overall, our suspension rate is down. At this time last year, we were at 90, we're down to 72. So that is certainly trending in the right direction, and I thought that'd be good information to share with you on this evening. And sir, that concludes my report tonight.
Mr. Isola...
Yes, sir.
He was one of ours, so I don't have any qualms mentioning this. To Be Like Jake, the foundation also just put up today that during this month, they're selling this year's T-shirts to help raise money for that organization. So if somebody happens to be online and is interested in looking at them, just to note they're there. And the last, last week or the week before, Howell High School in Coltsneck did a cooperative effort where they were selling T-shirts at one of the games that they had with the money going towards the families. So it's wonderful to see that this community continues to support that family and all other families who are going through like issues.
Thank you. It is now time for committee updates and liaison reports. Mr. Bon Javoni?
Let's start from my left, Mr. Gorman.
I will pick up on what the Race to Educate, what Mr. Isola was talking about. I just note that I also was at the IDEA Lab over at Aldridge, and they originally started with a grant from the Health and Education Foundation. And they received a couple of grants, and that helped them to get here to just keep moving. And as others have said, I want to congratulate all the teachers and media people and the administration for the tremendous job they did, and how they competed against so many other districts to win that award.
I resume my... Sorry, to win that award. So that was terrific, and again, the Race to Educate, the money is raised, it goes for these grants for innovative programming that our teachers and staff provide for our students. So please come out for that. I do want to mention a couple of programs I attended that were not connected with the school board that I thought were very interesting and informative. First of all, I would mention about school board programs, they're outstanding. The technology program we had just a few weeks ago, where it was Howell leads, it was our program, our leaders throughout the district, Ms. Engel and so many of the other outstanding people in the district who spoke to statewide audience. And I'm looking forward next week to going to a program that they're sponsoring on special ed. But I do want to mention a couple of other programs I recently attended. One was, I was over at Ocean County Community College a few weeks ago when Temple Grandin spoke, and she was introduced in a way that I think is right. She's probably the most famous autistic person in the United States, and she, of course, is a truly magnificent person. She's well-known, of course, because of her brilliant work in animal husbandry. Dr. Grandin, who teaches at Colorado State University, who was a leader throughout that whole field. But again, at three years of age, the family, she couldn't speak, and the family was told, just institutionalize her. She's autistic, there's no future for her. And of course, she went on, and she's now an expert. She speaks at universities in animal husbandry, she speaks to financial groups, she speaks at all sorts of sessions. And her other area, of course, is the area that she's so familiar with, which is autism. And of course, I'm sure many of us have seen that most magnificent production with Claire Danes in it about Temple Grandin's life. It's just magnificent from an entertainment point of view, as well as being informational and inspiring. And again, the reason I want to mention what she was talking about is because I felt like I was at one of our programs here of the things we talk about at this table, and what Mr. Isola and the administration talks about and our staff. And that is to see the potential of all our students. And everything that she was talking about, I felt it was resonating with what we try to do, what work we're doing. Again, she expressed the importance of helping each child to stretch, not too far, but you must stretch them, you must give them the opportunities to grow and learn. She talked about autistic children, and from early on, they should be given that opportunity to have social interaction, to learn the rules, to learn to be part of the society, to have the interaction with the other students and develop social skills. Have expectations, they were all there. And again, she talked, she does speak to many groups all over the country about what we've been talking about, career and vocational education. And it was right online. I heard her speak, or actually, I saw her on TV once on C-SPAN, where she pointed out that half the people who were in Silicon Valley, she says, are autistic, and they're able to make a very good living and live and function very well, even though they may have certain challenges with social skills. But you go through the whole spectrum of autism, and the point she makes is, she was talking about what we've talked about. There will be jobs in the future with, for people who work with their hands, who are practical, who can be inventive. And she stressed the point that we need to discover the interests of each student and promote the development of each of their special talents. Because they may not be able to do everything well, none of us can. But again, it's the play, passion, purpose. It's the whole point there. So it was thrilling and instructive to see such a magnificent human being speak. A second program I was at just two days ago, it was a program for teachers of secondary languages, actually Spanish-speaking teachers, and the presenter was outstanding. But what he talked about is applicable to instruction in all fields. And he talked about Generation Z, the young people from, you know, were old, you know, from 1996 on, who were born since. And now apparently, he says, there's even a babyless generation of three or four-year-olds who, I've seen it myself with my grandkids, they can, you know, intuitively just take that iPhone or iPad and just begin to work with it and know what to do. I'm just amazed. But he was talking about how you reach those students, and he was talking a lot about reaching middle school students. Again, given their interest in iPhones and iPads and their familiarity with it, how their brains are wired, what they work with, that today's students like visuals, they're interactive, they're hands-on, they love challenges, they're curious, that's not new. They love working out strategies, the idea of autonomy, mastery, no purpose of activity. So what do I want to link this to? Friday, I was over at Adelphi's school. They had their market fair for second... Friday, I was over at Adelphi School, they had their market fair for second graders. What a thrill! And then when I heard the discussion on the next day, it all sort of came together again. Here is a situation where the second graders put on a market fair. So half the time, they were consumers, they spent half the time buying things that others had made, and half the time, they were producers. Each of them had a task to do, they had to come up with a project, create something, think of something they'd like to create, create it, then advertise it and sell it. And so whether it be paper planes made from clothespins, or rockets, I didn't get to the rockets because they were sold out, kids went to the rockets fast, or for drawings, magnificent drawings, or games, or bookmarks, things that children put together, the students put together. I watched them, and again, they often worked in teams, collaborating, the collaboration, the communication, the interaction, the joy in the room, and learning all these skills, learning how to read, learning how to draw, learning how to advertise, they had all these promotions for other students to see what they'd want. We're doing it in so many different ways, I say, we're doing it. The school district's doing it, our superintendent, our administration, our teachers, our staff, and it starts early. I think I heard earlier, Mr. Preston talking, when we had the younger people, the middle school students here, talking about promoting and branding. They're doing it in second grade and before, so we're doing it right, and I just want to applaud you for that. As far as the Legislative Advocacy Committee, we have a meeting on May twentieth at seven thirty. And I'd also mention, I know school boards has legislative day scheduled for May sixteenth. This is a collaboration, an annual collaboration between the School Boards Association and New Jersey Parent Teacher Association, where they have Legislative Day in Trenton, I know a number of us are going to be going, and we'll be able to hear from a number of leaders in the state, including some of the legislators. Thank you.
Mr. Gorman, the programs you mentioned that you attended, thank you, you just backed up my point that I made before about the effort that many of the board members on this, many of the members on this board, the efforts they do to continue their own education, to bring information back, so thanks so much. Mrs. Malley?
Okay, operations has not met since the last time we met, but I would like to comment on the outdoor classroom, a model outdoor classroom at Memorial, I did attend that, and that was fantastic. I loved, the outdoor classroom is broken up into several rooms, and it's just fascinating, fantastic to see that there was actually a teacher holding a class out there after they had the ribbon cutting. She actually was sitting there with all of her students around her, and she was reading to them, so it was being used right then and there, and it was wonderful to see. And I remember when I myself was in university, and, you know, when the spring weather came up, we always asked the professors if we could go outside, you know, so this was just fantastic to see the students interacting with the outdoor classroom, so that was a wonderful thing. And the other thing that I attended was the Ramtown STEM Bowl, but unfortunately, my partner, Ms. Engel, was not there. I missed you. No, I didn't even participate. I didn't participate in the challenge because I didn't have my great partner over here, yes. But that was also a wonderful thing, they came up with new innovative challenges for the students to participate in, to win the STEM Bowl, and that's a wonderful thing that the Ramtown School does, to further that STEM knowledge. They actually used, they had to build a basket to hold, I believe it was an egg, and send it down a zip line, and see if it would stay in the basket and if it would not get broken. So that was very, very creative that they had to come up with that, yes, but thank you.
Mr. Miller?
The Finance Committee has not met since the last meeting. However, I want to thank the Finance Committee and the district staff for putting together a budget for the board to approve tonight. I attended the ribbon cutting of Aldridge's school IDEA STEAM Lab. At the Monmouth County School Board meeting, Mrs. Malley received her certified school board member certification, and Mr. Gorman received his new board member certification, so congratulations to both of them. What was that?
Ten, ten-year pin.
And, yes, and he received his ten-year pin, being that he had a slight break in service, but he did put in his ten years on the board. And finally, I was re-elected as the Monmouth County School Board President.
Okay, that's it.
Dr. Jeffrey, anything to add tonight?
No.
No.
Mrs. Okerson?
I did attend before break the Newberry Band Concert and Choir Concert, but in Newberry, they had, in Ms. Chung's absence, they had to find, you know, a band teacher rather quickly, and Mr. Flaherty did step up and did really an amazing job, that concert was all him, and so, good job to them.
Was that the concert that it was a past student who led the, right?
Yes, he is a former house student.
Who stepped in and now took over?
In his bowtie.
Pardon me?
In his bowtie.
In his bowtie. That was great.
Oh, Mr. Flaherty.
I believe that completes the reports.
It's time for the first public comment, whereas the Howell Township Board of Education determines that comments from the public may last forty-five minutes, and those comments will be conducted in accordance with Bylaw 0164.1. Individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of board. Mr. Bon Javani, may the floor be open?
Sure.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none? May the floor be closed?
Please.
Don't believe we have any discussion items listed? Are there any?
Don't believe we do.
It is time for the consent agenda, sir. Minus six thousand one, which has already been moved and passed.
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Malley, second by Ms. Okerson. May I take that around?
Please.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Javani?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved, six votes in favor, none opposed. It is now, may I do the second public comment?
Please.
Same announcement as the first public comment, the officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of board, Mr. Bon Javani, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none? May the floor be closed?
Please.
Move it.
Thank you.